All right, well, good evening, everyone. I'm Zooming in tonight, so I apologize. And I know there's two others. I know the air is on as well. So if there's questions with regards to the stuff before us, the mayor is on, because he had another event as well. So with that, I will call the roll for the full city council meeting for September 20th, 2023. It's a special meeting. Counselor Anderson Berga.
Here.
Counselor Bartlett.
Here.
Counselor Gibner.
Here.
Counselor Jordan.
Here.
Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Here.
Counselor McGee here. Counselor McGivern.
Here.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Here.
Counselor Puelo.
Here.
Counselor Izzy Rivera.
Here.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
Here.
Counselor Tomlin.
Here.
Counselor Bacon.
Here.
With that, I'll, because I'm not in the room, I'm going to turn over to Counselor McGivern, that way we can be able to see raising hands and answering questions, just to make it function better. I'd ask us to stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then I'll turn over to Counselor McGivern to run the meeting, but I'll be here for votes and everything else, simply because to make it a smoother process. With that, Counselor McGivern, turn over to you for Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a word of explanation, this is a little different than when the president is not here, the president is here. He's going to be on, he, perfect explanation of it's impossible to run a meeting on Zoom and see everybody that's in the chambers, and the vast majority of the city council is in the chambers. So I want you just to think of, this is our rules, it's the president's choice who comes up to run any particular item, but I'm really just standing here as Todd's avatar. Okay? Let's keep that in mind as we go forward tonight. I heard that, you know, if you're going to mumble underneath your breath, turn your mic off.
I didn't say anything, but I do have one point of order. We have to make a motion, see now there are some people on Zoom with regards to suspending the rules.
I'm looking for that copy right now. Come on, Jeff.
It should be right under there, Joe, under my.
Motion to take a roll call vote for the purpose of this meeting would be to be applicable to all motions received to refer items to committee, remove items from table, place items on a table, package items together, or suspend the rules, anything of a minor motion unless there is an objection. On that motion, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved. We do have, besides Counselor McGee, we have Counselor Maldonado, Maldonado Velez on Zoom, and I think we have Counselor Jenny Rivera on Zoom. Okay. With that in mind, this is a meeting called by the mayor for six o'clock in the chambers. The meeting was, is accessible by Zoom. We are being televised, we are being recorded, and we are being streamed. Besides all that, Zoom is doing the recording. So item number one.
On, Mr. President.
Counselor, Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, I have a point of parliamentary inquiry. As you know, a special meeting notice is required to be received in the mail, is supposed to be required to be mailed to every counselor at least 48 hours in advance and/or served at our home, 24 hours in advance, and I believe that's under chapter 187 of the Acts of 1965 that was adopted by this council in the city of Hoy Oak. Was, was, I didn't, I don't, did anybody else get a meeting notice in the mail? I, I, was one brought to your home 24 hours in advance?
I got one in my email.
Yeah.
You got an email. Okay.
Notice by email counts.
So, I just want to bring up to the desk the state law that requires in our charter, this is particular to special meetings of the Hoy Oak City Council, that we have specific rules that are required for the proper noticing of special meetings, and I draw your attention to. It's also, by the way, written in Rule 3F of our rules, right here. So I would argue the meeting hasn't been properly noticed, and would have to be rescheduled.
Do city council rules over supersede?
This is in the charter, Tessa, just so you understand.
Oh, great. Thank you so much.
Counselor, we have a session, and we'll follow. Please address your comments and your questions, Chair. Counselor Jenny, thank you. Counselor Rivera.
I guess for me, I never received a letter for any other special meetings that we've ever held in the past two years either, and we still held the meetings. So I think that right now, pulling, bringing this up, not to say that it's not a valid issue, and that it's not a rule or a regulation, but to bring it up now in a particular moment is like wielding it as a weapon when in the past it's never been brought up as an issue before. So I would like to point that out and make, make public comment of that too as well.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
I just, yeah, everything Counselor Rivera said, I, thanks.
Moving on, item number one.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gray.
Yes, I, I object to the meeting in that it wasn't proper.
That's the first objection I've heard, so fire.
Oh, okay, then I object to the holding of the meeting in light of the, our charter and our rules. I mean, it says very clearly, yeah.
Motion to take up item four, out of order.
On the objection, okay, objection has been made, the Avatar, who deferred to the president of the city council.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what the argument is, but from my understanding, from prior rulings from the Law Department, it's a law as it's posted, even though we didn't receive a mailing herself, it meant open meeting laws, which would be sufficient. So the meeting should be able to go forward as is. That's what my understanding has been in the past from legal.
Mr. President.
The, just note that there is a unanimous attendance by the full city council. I think everyone received this by email, which I think has been practiced since, probably since COVID, if not since the day and age, and I note that the language, you know, doesn't suggest an email is suffice, but I think when the language is written, there were no emails, safe to say. But regardless, Counselor, President has made a decision. Counselor Jordan.
Well, I'd like to have perhaps, I see Mr. Bissonnet is here, maybe we can have the Law Department rule in here. Bottom line is, we have rules on these notices, and we're required to follow them. If there was some other, maybe I didn't notice it, but I certainly noticed it on this as of coming down here, I still had not received the proper notice. We've had in the past problems with special meeting notices in prior sessions here, not in this term. I'm not sure, maybe we had one other special meeting this, this term too? I don't recall what those were off the top of my head.
You do.
But maybe they were properly sent, I don't know. But this one, I certainly did notice it, and it should always be being followed, and I would ask that we have the Law Department address it, because it challenges the entire validity of the meeting. You, you don't have, again, we have laws. You don't get to pick and choose the laws.
You don't get to pick and choose when to enforce it.
It'll be order. Come on now, let's go. One person at a time.
Right. I mean, you can say ignore the law, but you, the fact of the matter is, is we have laws, maybe you wish it was written in some other way, then there is a way to file a charter change to change what our charter says. And the fact of the matter is, is if people are not following the law and not following the rules, that's a problem. And I certainly observed it, and therefore I would ask if Mr. Bissonnet could address the issue. It's, again, it's Rule 3F, which I should say, by the way, in this notion about, oh, you just posted on the board, no, no, no. This is in addition to the open meeting law. If you read 3F, it says, "The mayor or president of the city council may at any time call a special meeting of the council by causing written notification thereof, together with a statement of the subjects to be considered their act, to be delivered to the city clerk and deposited in the post office, postpaid, addressed to each member of the council, at least 48 hours before the time of the setting in the meeting, which is Massachusetts general law, the chapter 187 of the Acts of 1965. Such notice shall likewise be posted in compliance with the open meeting law of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts." That's the issue about posting it and all of that. Counselors are to be provided with mailed notice at least 48, or you have to deliver it in person 24 hours at our usual place of residence. That's the law. Thank you. And I would ask Mr. Bissonnet if.
We will, we will ask, we will ask the Law Department to weigh in, absolutely. Just on 3F, on the clerk's office, it was received in the clerk's office, I have the original copy here stamped on September 14th. And I think the whole purpose of the, of the rule is that any member of this body is notified in a timely fashion about a special meeting, so something doesn't happen quick, and something doesn't happen without them knowing it, whereas we have unanimous attendance, and I think everybody was notified timely, even though it wasn't through the post office, it was through email, which is even quicker. But that's just my thought. Counselor Gibner, real quick, then we'll get Attorney Bissonnet.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to mention that with the remote meeting laws, I would, I would think that once those were approved, they would include emails, and so therefore include email notify, notification, and I would also underscore that the 48-hour rule has to do with mail and how long it takes to mail things, and email is much quicker. Thank you very much.
Attorney Bissonnet, are you with us, and if you're listening, could you weigh in, please?
Good evening, President Avatar, and members of the council. I, I appreciate Counselor Jordan's point. However, you may recall, the great deal of time we spent as one L students talking about notice and the opportunity to be heard. I think that lies, underlies all of the open meeting law for most of the folks that would want to entertain, participate in, or attend a meeting. I think definitively you can say that all of your fellow members received some awareness, some notice that there was a meeting to be held tonight. They received that notice 48 hours prior to the meeting. I'm not sure if anyone's tried the US mail lately, but our mail was now redirected through Hartford, so 48 hours may have meant that you wouldn't get it till after the meeting. In any event, I believe that in this case, notice has been provided sufficient to meet the requirements of both section 12 of the charter as well as your own rules. I would again remind the council that they are able by a three-quarter, a two-thirds vote to suspend all, any of all of the rules at the same time. I thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Attorney Bissonnet. Counselor Gray.
Yeah. Well, there's a law that says what sufficient notice is. This city wrote it, this is the way the notice is, it's in the charter, and by the way, you can't suspend the charter. The city council rule 3F is just an adaptation of what the charter says. Again, we're a legislative body. By definition, we're talking about voting on ordinances to create laws. This is a rule that we have on proper notice of special meetings. It's a specific rule in our charter, adopted in 1965, that says how notice is to be provided. Again, you know, we've got to follow the rules. It's this rule, it's other rules, it's a lot of these rules. And to just say, these are inconveniences, I'm sorry, but then change what the charter says, but other than that, you took an oath of office to enforce the rules, and the rules say what the notice is supposed to be. And by the way, was any notice for this meeting even mailed? Forget whether it was mailed late, was it even mailed at all? Doesn't appear it was, it was just emailed. So that sort of debunks that point as well. So again, you know, this perhaps is par for the course here, but the fact of the matter is, Mr. President, we have rules, and these things are just waived, and we have a charter, and they're just waived off like they don't even exist. So we just pick and choose the laws that we want to enforce here. So, you know, I'm just letting you know, I'm paying attention over in this corner of the room, and I know what the rules are.
Okay. Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Thank you, Mr. President Avatar, sir. McGivern? I'm so glad we're talking about enforcing the rules, because I'm really looking to enforcing the decorum rule, because I've seen it not followed here multiple times. And, you know, I have only been on the council for about 18 months, and I see when we choose the rules, when we decide not to choose the rules, when we can use the rules in our favor, when we use them against the people who are newer. It is unreal, and I think we all actually made a little joke at the last meeting about how this was probably going to happen, and we were filing, we're going to have a reason to not vote for it tonight. And the fact that we all showed up, this is not about, it's not about all of us not being considerate, it's about all of us understanding that government needs to move forward, and this is literally just, I mean, we, we, the other counselors are right, we have gotten notified about special meetings via email before, was never a problem, but now it is, that's cool, I'm definitely going to file an order to update that, whatever, you got to pass it through a vote, great. I mean, like, the fact that we are literally using the charter to slow down government is not what was intended by the charter. So we can talk about fiscal responsibility, fiscal watchdog, fiscal everything, this is not fiscally responsible, and if we're looking for an excuse, I guess you found it, cool, but like, I am so, so over this. Let's actually do some work in government.
Counselor Rivera.
I think, for me, it's sad, because I could be home with my kids, right? If, if that's the case, right? Everyone is here. I actually didn't want to meet today, but I made the time to meet today, because I knew that this is something that had to be done, right? So ultimately, now, it's like you search through a book, and you're looking, and you're looking, and you're like, oh my God, I found it, a technicality. And I, and it's like, oh, here we go, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be the guy, I'm gonna be the one to save us. The technicality, I found it, I found it. And you have all these, like, who are we working for? The people or for ourselves, right? Like, what, what is the purpose? What is the purpose of knowing what you know, and, and knowing how to, how to, how to move forward in the process of government? If you don't agree with something, then you don't agree with it, just like I didn't. I didn't agree with ShotSpotter. Did I do temper tantrums and throw fits and try to block things? No, and I just voted no. That's it, plain and simple. That, that's what can happen, that's what happens at the end of the day. If we're playing this game, people can, like, this is, this is make pretend, man. At the end of the day, what's happening here is a you thing, or a, 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 let's stop it thing, without actually having process of government work effectively and efficiently, and it is not fair to us as other counselors that come here and spend their time to come here, that we're going to waste time to block somebody or block something. But at the same time, it's also wasting our taxpayers' dollars, wasting our taxpayers' time and energy too at the same time, and it's sad that they don't see that, bro.
Counselor Jordan.
Yep. Well, speaking of decorum, and again, in my remarks, I don't make personal statements about you, I don't make personal statements about you or others.
One person at a time.
You know? And I defy you, and I, you can prove that statement, but go ahead.
One person at a time.
Yep.
This is the Avatar speaking.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. You know, again, I get it, I'm in the, I'm not part of the clique around here, and so it's, of course, it's election time on top of it, so that just adds another wrinkle to it. I just happen to know the rules better than perhaps a lot of the new people that are on this city council, and I pay attention to these things. So the fact of the matter is, is when this happened, I pointed out, because it does question, clearly, the validity of the meeting as not properly noticed. You, you can wish it away, it wasn't. As far as all this other stuff is, I don't need to go through the rulebook and play gotcha. I actually have this stuff easily handled, it's right here. I don't need to go through a book and find a technicality, it's all right here. Okay? So that's, that comes with experience, and hopefully when others are here as long as I have been, you will have that experience. So anyways, apparently, the president and the Law Department don't feel we should follow the charter, that's fine. We'll continue with the meeting, but it does question the validity of the meeting, and I'm just putting that out there. And in the future, the, the meeting notices are, we have special, we have rules relative to the notices of special meetings. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the email, the invitation with the agenda was sent on September 14th. All city counselors got a copy of it. The first two city counselors to respond were Counselor Jordan and Counselor McGivern, who said we would be here. The agenda was given to everybody, point well taken as far as not using the mail, the charter language, I agree, but I think with unanimous attendance, it kind of speaks for itself that everybody has the agenda, everybody had the notice in a timely fashion, and it is time to get to work. Counselor Jenny Rivera is on Zoom, she did have her hand up. Counselor Rivera, did you want to add anything?
I do. I want to add that this is quite ridiculous, the law is a law, I get it. We were notified. I am in Dallas, Texas, on a work training where my boss paid over $3,000 for me to be here. I stepped out, we have wasted 27 minutes of this meeting, and I'm still here, and I can't attend my meeting, my training, because we want to go back and forth on how we got notified. We got notified by email, quite obvious, we're all here. Everybody was notified. So can we just go on with this meeting, whatever's on the agenda, and discuss that, so that I can continue with my training? Thank you.
Item number one.
Motion to take up item four, out of order. Second.
Motion, as a man, second, to proceed out of order to take up item number, item number four. And that motion is ready to be discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, so moved. Item number four was laid on the table at our last regular meeting of the city council. It was the committee report from the committee on ordinance, to whom was referred to the city, that's an order, that the city council adjusts the sewer rate ordinance, recommend that the order, the committee report was a recommendation that the order be adapted with a recommended rate of $8.02. Counselor Bacon, I know we've already had the committee report, I know your committee, because I attended it with you, has discussed this at great length. Is there anything that you wanted to add, Mr. Chair?
Well, as chair, you've heard the majority report, so I would only add the minority report, which is that we have outstanding information that we're waiting for. We do not have a final budget for the enterprise fund at this point. We're setting a rate without a budget, and we've had a rate of 858 proposed, 787, now we're at 802. I filed an order hoping to get a breakout on the street sweeping costs by our current contractor. That was not put on this agenda tonight, so we can't talk about that or take it up. My understanding is that Viola's working up the cost so that we could consider it at our next meeting. So I'll leave it there. I just don't think we have the complete information to take this vote, and I will not be supporting the 802 rate tonight. Thank you.
And a motion to take out of order, all those in favor, any opposed, so moved. Is there any other discussion?
I have a discussion.
Counselor Jordan.
So again, what was the rule that we discussed at the last meeting? You're required to give the legal form 48 hours in advance. When was the legal form sent? 3:47 this afternoon. So what do you think? Should, should I object? One person can object under our rules, we know that rule, right? That's not a, that's not a hide the ball, go through the, go through the rulebook technicality again, it's, they're required to provide the legal form, and they waited till an hour before or two hours before the meeting. But I'm going to be nice, and I'm not going to object on that one, but the point is, we discussed that at the last meeting. And there again, in comes the legal form two hours before the meeting. You know, we have rules on all this stuff, you know? And it's how the body functions. Today, it's a one-sentence ordinance, 805, 802, whatever it is, but after we had that whole discussion, last meeting, and we objected and we tabled it, right? Which is why, one of the reasons we're having, they did it again. And this is happening all the time on the legal forms, and we have a rule on that. So I think we have to have a motion on the first reading, do we not, in order to have a full discussion, or are we going to keep, or is someone going to make that?
I'll make the motion, pass the first reading.
Motion made a second that we passed the first reading, right?
First reading.
First reading. On the, on the legal form, the legal form is in front of the city council, the legal form was received by the city council last week. It was not passed on to each of us as members to, until, as Counselor Jordan, until yesterday. The scrimner era of $8.02 has been corrected, the only difference between this and what we received two weeks ago is the $8.02 and not $8.05. So 05 became 02. There's not the Law Department's issue, they did forward it, it just didn't get to us, you know, through our administrative assistant in a timely fashion.
Okay, I, I don't know about yesterday, I got mine today, this afternoon, but eat it as it may, I'll speak to the merits of the issue. And by the way, you know, there's also another rule that, you know, I could object, because you have all three readings on the same night. I'm very tempted on that one, by the way, since my other concerns are so cavalierly dismissed in many respects, my personal opinion, I respect the opinions of others on these type of things. But with respect to the sewer rate, again, it should be a matter of last resort that we increase fees. My concerns relative to increasing this rate is to raise an additional $600,000. One, because we're putting city-side expenses into this fund. That should not be happening. Things like street sweeping, things like the culvert repair, things like the other MS4 work that is being done, that should not be all being paid out of the sewer fund. But it is. And the concern for me, and for those of us that watch how much people are being taxed and feed here in this great community, is the fact that it sets a very dangerous precedent in that Proposition Two and a half is there to protect the residents from overtaxation. If we take city-side expenses as an end run around Proposition Two and a half, and we bury them in the sewer fund, we can keep increasing that sewer fund beyond what is totally and completely necessary. And you can take all these type of related expenses and put them in there. Now, it's sobering that we don't know what those costs completely are. You have the leadership asking us for this increase, and they themselves do not know. We received an email from Viola representative today that said, we would need more time to make that calculation, to do that determination. That in and of itself would be a grounds for tabling this, for sure. Our constituents are really up against it from cost perspective. Every little bit helps. This additional $40, $50 per year for this cost is going to be layered on top of two additional bond requests that are coming very shortly for additional work that needs to be done. So they're going to get hit with two more of these 50 cent increases. We've already got among the very highest sewer rates, certainly in Western Massachusetts, and that's only going to keep going up, up, up. We're, at this trajectory, we're going to be over $9 at a minimum at this point. We need serious attempt to make sure anything that isn't directly sewer-related is put out of the city budget. is put out of the city budget. So effectively, the citizens are being taxed an additional $600,000 that they don't have to be. Some of the things that are mentioned as emergency one-time expenses are also being, I think, assumed too much to be every single year out of this. But that can take additional examination. But what I'm particularly concerned about is the culvert repairs, and the street sweeping, and the MS4 expenses, some of which probably belong in the sewer fund, but many do not. So therefore, these things should be being paid out of the general fund, which would be subject to the tax limit. They're being put here. It's an ability to charge the people more than they otherwise should be charged. And we really should not be doing that. So for those reasons, I think we, one, should get additional information from Viola to identify these expenses. They did say they could do it. They just need more time to do it. And then, number two, we should not be adding anything that is extra expense into this line and charge the people the least amount possible. And this is a very challenging time to be going up on people any more than absolutely necessary. So therefore, for those reasons, I would be voting no.
Motion on the floor is the first reading. Is there any other discussion? On the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made second ordinance passage. Second reading. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion made second the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk or Avatar or someone's going to call the roll.
I will call the roll, Councilor McGivern.
Thank you.
So Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Counselor Bartley.
No.
Yep.
To be clear, we're voting on the 802 sewage rate.
I'm sorry. Yes. Just a question, a clarification. Mr. President, Counselor McGivern asked about the sewer rate. It's $8.02 per 1,000 gallons.
Correct. So let me start back over. Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Counselor Bartley.
No.
Counselor McGivern.
Yes.
Counselor Jordan.
No.
Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Yes.
Counselor McGee, no. Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Yes.
Counselor Puelo.
No.
Oh, you missed Counselor McGivern, by the way. Your body double. You missed him.
I missed, like, Counselor McGivern. I apologize.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti, yes. Was there Puelo? Counselor Puelo?
No.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Tallman.
Yes.
Counselor Vacan.
No.
Eight to five.
Eight-five.
That's a no. Okay, on to item one.
Are you running the meeting?
Todd, do you want to announce that, or you want me to, or?
So the vote was eight to five.
Okay. Eight to five, required a two-thirds, so therefore it fails.
Correct. Need nine.
Item number one is from the committee on finance. It was referred in order that there being hereby is appropriate by transfer in fiscal year 2024, $200,000 as follows. $100,000 from line item patrolmen, $100,000 from the Quinn bill incentive plan, $200,000 into overtime. Motion is on the floor is to
Pass the first reading.
Take up the committee report to pass the first reading.
Want the vice chairman? Vice chairman, we could do it.
Yes. I had to think for a minute. Counselor Jordan, if you could just
Unless you want me to suspend the rules to allow our
Chairman Avatar. I like Chairman Avatar as our chairman of finance. I'll make a motion
to suspend the rules. Allow Counselor McGivern to speak.
I'll second it.
Make a motion made second to suspend the rules for the purpose of allowing the Avatar chair to make the committee report, which this rule suspended is anybody chairing a meeting should not be entering into debate. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. It was, it's a unanimous recommendation of the full city council. We had Chief Pratt with us first on where it's coming from, the patrolmen. We've known that there were some vacancies at the beginning of the year. Vacancies have been filled. Very good news. We had 10, he told us there's 10 new recruits that are now on duty. There's still four, I believe, out for patrol, but I think there's still like three or four in the academy. And those numbers are the highest they've been in many, many years. Also, we did, on a nice note, thanks to Counselor Bartley, we did see a lot of these recruits at the Big E last night as they joined us on the trolley because of the rule where they can't march. But they escorted us on the trolley, and we had a good time meeting them. And I'm going to get, I'm going to share a story with everybody, because this is pretty special. New officer, I believe it's Maria Rivera, brand-new police officer. Jenny's standing with me, and she looked over and she goes, Maria? And she goes, Mrs. McGivern. Jenny taught her in second grade. Now, her second-grade student is a police officer in Hoyok.
Oh, that's awesome.
And I think that's, I mean, it was Kelly School, I think. But absolutely wonderful. So the chief went on to tell us what's going on with overtime. Overtime is up a little bit per pay period. Last pay period did come down to 51,000, was 58. It was averaging last couple of years around 38. He anticipates with all these people, all these new officers coming on board, that that overtime period, pay per period will be coming back down and even getting lower, as this is the highest numbers we've ever had. So after asking all our questions, the committee did remake the recommendation to pass this transfer this evening.
On the motion?
Motion, Counselor Rivera.
So just for clarification, we're transferring money from where the account
It's $100,000 surplus in the patrol line item, because there wasn't always the, I think we're up to, I forget, Kevin, you remember? How many?
Yeah, I'm just for, just to say it out loud.
I mean, the goal is 92. Goal's 92. I think we're at 88, 89.
Yeah, we're getting there.
And then the Quinn bill, he did say that the reason there was a surplus there is a couple retirements didn't or are not happening, and there's just somebody anticipated Quinn bill monies for those on duty didn't come in as high as it was expected.
So is that new to have a surplus in the Quinn bill money?
Well, yes, it is, it is kind of new. The, what is new is the Quinn bill has been capped. You no longer, everybody coming on board now goes under a different educational incentive.
Right.
You don't get the Quinn bill. So it's the number of people who are eligible for the Quinn bills is dwindling. So it's kind of a moving target every year.
So that means for the next fiscal budget, we should expect the Quinn bill dollars to go down?
I think that's fair, but I won't be around.
Okay. Thank you.
It has been trending down.
Yeah, it has, yeah.
You know, so, and as people retire, they're under the, from the old program to the new program. So it is getting better.
I think Counselor Rivera is becoming conservative.
I know. How about that?
Imagine that.
Look at that. I'm rubbing off. Maybe we should sit closer to each other.
You wish, right?
We're working on it. We're working.
Take some credit, I guess.
I'll make a motion to pass the second reading.
Motion made, motion to pass the first reading. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. Motion has been made second to pass the second reading. The roll will be called. If you vote yes, you're voting in favor of the committee report to allow the transfer. If you don't know, you're voting against the transfer.
Counselor Anderson Burgos.
I'm going to assume that was me. Yes.
Did you not hear it? Okay. Counselor Bartley.
Yes.
Counselor McGivern.
Yes.
Counselor Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Maldonado Velez.
Yes.
Counselor McGee.
Yes.
Counselor McGivern.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy Rambeletti.
Yes.
Counselor Puelo.
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Tallman.
Yes.
Counselor Vacan.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Motion to take up item two, Mr. President?
And that vote, it did pass unanimously and
We did both readings, right?
Yes.
We did.
Yes, that was the
Just double checking. Okay, good.
Motion is made second to take item two off the table. The committee on finance was referred in order that the treasurer and Mass Munifin come before the finance committee to update on the overall progress of the department and the scope of services of work being done. Recommend that the order has been complied with. Off the table for discussion. All those in favor? Any opposed? So moved. I think under the same suspension rules, I'll just quickly. This was a very lengthy meeting. We had Mass Munifin along with Rory Casey. We had the mayor. We had the auditor. We had a number of different people come before the finance committee, and we did spend a good, if I remember, a good two and a half hours on this. Much of it in the beginning, the presentation PowerPoint by Sarah from Mass Munifin, if I'm saying it correct, was outlining the issues in the treasurer's department. Much of it historic, some of it which we knew, some of it which maybe was new to us or shed in a different light. But it was a lot of the reasons of why the department is not reconciling cash revenue coming in, why there are issues with a lot, a number of different things that they do. When the discussion was over, I don't want to make this too simple, but a big part of it comes down to the failure of the city to adopt a lot of programs under the Munifin system itself. We learned, and I think we knew this, but we did learn that with ARPA monies, because it's, especially in the beginning, a lot of ARPA monies were spent, and we didn't know exactly what they were spent on, but that the mayor has purchased a lot of the necessary hardware that is, that is known in the Munifin system, that is needed, even the payroll system. We've talked about that at great length, you know, to put us into the correct, correct century. There's a lot of history to that. A few of us got into a discussion about the failure of prior administrations, the failure of what didn't happen where the city council had pushed for all department heads to go to Munifin long, probably a decade ago, when we first started talking at it at great length. But when, finally, when we, that part of the discussion was done, we started asking, well, we did request a detailed report of what happened over the first year of the contract with Mass Munifin. And we got some, some detailed explanations and some of the work was doing. We found out that some of the people that are working for Mass Munifin are actually doing, there's five positions in the treasurer's department. Technically, at the moment, you can say there's three that are filled, counting Rory Casey as a treasurer. There is the open for deputy treasurer, and the opening, I believe the senior clerk is still open, with the other clerk's positions are filled. And we, you know, we found out one of the clerks is working almost strictly on payroll, which is not unusual. We had a little discussion about, well, payroll can be farmed out, and payroll can be done differently, or payroll can be shared by other departments and other ways of doing it. The auditor had made a suggestion, we talked about this a little bit, that, you know, for the day-to-day stuff, there are temp companies out there that have professionals that could do this work. And with the, with the money, surplus money in the line items for the two vacant positions, why not hire a couple of temps, freeing up the consultant to do the consulting work and to do the, more about the advising about, you know, training and advising about what the future is going to look like in that office. So we finally got, we finally had a discussion near the end of this very long night that started, started at the tip of the iceberg about discussing those types of items with both the consultant and the treasurer. With, I'll do respect, I know I missed a lot, but I think everybody that wasn't there has probably seen it by now. We do, we did receive two reports, I know, today, yesterday. Last night, we did receive two reports. I looked quickly. I think one of them might be the PowerPoint itself, but looks like there's some more information, some more detailed information that we've been asking for. And we do know, we do know there's a major problem that still exists in the treasurer's office. It wasn't so much about pointing fingers or maybe not even asking why, but asking, we know what it is. When are we going to have it corrected? And that's, that's still the open-ended question. With that in mind, the mayor, the mayor did join us, and the mayor was very specific that he'd like to see the work continue with Mass Munifin. I did ask, and a lot of questions were asked, but I did ask one question of if we could break down the contract like we did with the summer thing, where we could maybe continue the services for keeping the office afloat until we get some detailed work as to where we were. And I didn't get a direct answer. I got a good answer that, you know, her reputation is on the line, and she documented in her mind the need to keep the, to keep it going for another year, probably more than a year, if they're ever going to correct a lot of these problems. We did at the end get into a discussion about what has been an ongoing debate about changing the treasurer as an elected official, changing the position, different positions, hiring or perhaps creating a new position, the chief financial officer or CFA, or whatever you want to call it these days. And that was pretty much what the finance committee did. We report that the order's been complied with. Please, anybody help in and add anything you want. Counselor Jordan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President. I thought you gave a nice summary. Might as well just speak to it here. The next item, item number three, as you know, is the compendium to the discussion, which is the financial transfer from the stabilization fund to give an additional $250,000 for this year. The problem with giving an additional $250,000 is I have a fundamental disagreement relative to how we're addressing the long-term solution to the office. So I supported the, what I believed was the consultant experiment to go in there to help them clean up, which was $300,000. Again, I'll come back to, I don't believe it was discussed about this is, the vision was to do this for three years to be a cost of $900,000. It's staggering, the type of money that's being asked to, to clean up this office. There's long-term problems in this office. This council has been on this department. The inspector general's office has been on this office. Prior administrations have been on this office, good and bad. Some have enabled, some have been very strong in trying to get it cleaned up. So I'll let people determine who those mayors were. But as far as this council has allocated additional funds, and I believe there was another $50,000 at one point done for consultant support, it's got a long history in terms of this office. What concerns me about the current plan of three years for $900,000 of the cleanup is it's just far too, far too long. It's really unacceptable by, in my opinion, professional standards. If you were in the private sector, you would not have a situation where you would be allowed to say to your boss, hey, I need almost a million dollars in order to know how to do my job. Basically, at that point, they would say, see you later. We're going to go get somebody else. I cannot imagine any place in the private sector where you would be allowed to spend a million dollars and need a three-year turnaround to clean up an office of five staff. That's completely unacceptable. One year, 300 grand? That's what I thought we were signing up for. Not three years for 900,000. That's where I say timeout, okay? And that is my concern about the current plan. Now, let me say a few things. Rory Casey is a genuinely good person who is doing his level best with his skill set and experience to do what he can do to clean this office. He's giving it his 100% effort, okay? I did not vote for Rory. I felt there was a more qualified candidate. I know the mayor and the majority of this city council wanted to appoint Rory to this position as the acting treasurer. You know, again, I thought we should either have gone with the other candidate because he had, you know, the finance experience and the background and was willing to relocate here. I mean, this is a person who had been a VP of Finance and otherwise. But even besides that, we should have either continued the search if it meant more in terms of paying additional funds, whatever the case may be. To have the situation that we have now is really, really troubling. And the concern, and my biggest concern is that there is no end game to this at this point. Why I say that is, currently, she's dead. I cannot do this. I need another two years in order to do this. Because Counselor McGivern is correct. We asked for, could you do one more year? Because Counselor McGivern is correct, we asked for, could you do one more year? And we try and speed this up. No, my reputation, well, we can't afford $600,000 more of tax money to clean up this office. It is way, way too long. What we need to do is, we need to be, if we're going to appropriate, my recommendation is, take this in three-month chunks and quarterly chunks. This council gets reporting back that has specific benchmarks, that has specific performance, the mayor did agree. To date, up until this finance meeting and the order that I had filed on this, we were not getting any reporting about what was actually taking place for the prior $300,000. So that presentation that came to us the other day is the first actual working documents that we have seen on it. And a lot of the stuff is indeed impressive, no question. But the fact of the matter is, we need to have a very close, tight grip on this situation and follow the money and ensure that these benchmarks and milestones are being completed. So basically, what does that entail? That entails, I would say, we don't, because I don't think they're ready, but they need to have a three-month appropriation, have an immediate posting for the treasurer position, okay? Let's discuss the elected versus appointed for a moment. If we got the right candidate, Rory has stated he would step down and allow this person to be appointed. The concern I have is, there isn't even a posting soliciting the long-term solution, right? We all want to go to appointed, well, let's go get the candidate. We can't wait two years and then go post the position. That's not going to work. So what I recommend to the city leadership is that we should post the position, if it requires additional money to get the right candidate, perhaps we consider it. But that would be appropriate considering we're ready to lay down an additional $300,000 in consulting services to help the treasurer's office. So that, to me, is the most fiscally responsible approach, specific benchmarks, a specific operating plan, and to have these check-ins regularly and quarterly. And if we see this going off the rails, we're there. A couple other points I'd like to make. To me, it's a no-brainer about filling the vacancies. There's, we have five positions, one thing that was encouraging is the consultant said we're properly staffed. The problem, as she said, is the two that we have, with the exception of Rory, are not properly, have the training that they need. So that needs to be happening up, is more training. And we do need to fill these two vacancies immediately with temporary services. That should be happening immediately to get that type of support in the office. Hopefully, that might be able to save some additional money. I'm also making sure that the auditor is being listened to. She is doing tremendous work for this city and trying to hold these benchmarks in place. And you can just feel it's palatable, the frustration that she's having with this office on not meeting key deadlines. And it's throwing our entire financial schedule off. We have another benchmark for reconciliation of cash at the end of this month. That is not going to be met, even with the consulting services. Even though they know that these deadlines are coming up, they're talking about November 15th. That's not okay. We need to have this stuff done. Obviously, Rory did do a nice job on the point about munis. He is right on top of that to get that going. I won't even get into the history, the chairman alluded to it, about how we had that to be taken care of back in 2012. And that went off the rails for reasons discussed at that meeting, I won't get into that. So these are the reasons, my colleagues, that I cannot support this 250. And because when you vote for this tonight, you're actually signing up for an additional $300,000 on top of this. Because if you accept this plan, this is going to be a two more years for $600,000 plan. That doesn't work without all these other safeguards and benchmarks in place. Thank you.
Counselor Tessa Ramalletti.
Never mind.
What?
Never mind.
Counselor Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. So I would like to point out a couple of things about that meeting. One point of clarification that we received, sort of answered our question about the concern about the home rule petition that was presented and sent back to charter and rules that had been there for a couple of years before it was moved. And there was some concern about the 2026 date on it. But that was clarified to us, and I think it's important that we all understand that that is because of the term of the office. So there's absolutely nothing stopping us from taking that out of committee and sending it up to the state at this time because it is a technical matter of law that because of the term of the office being four years, that is how the language has to be written. And our acting treasurer, Rory Casey, did say that if that was approved and the person with the accounting background was hired, that he would resign the position prior to 2026. So I think that was the only sticking point. I think it's important to understand that so that we can just move that up to the State House because it will take a while up there, even so. Secondarily, this was mentioned but not emphasized, much, much, much of the discussion relative to the item that we're going to call complied with focused on both the past and the future. The problem with the presentation was that it did not focus on the now. What have we accomplished for $300,000? And quite frankly, the frustration in the room by our other departments, I think, was understated, if anything. And to have spent $300,000 to find ourselves essentially in the same place this year that we were last year is creating a great degree of frustration. And so I support the position that says we need to move now to get the people in the office that have the qualifications, just like we did with the DPW director. It's a very similar story. And so for those reasons, I'd like to see us move with the recruiting. We can't possibly pay somebody $300,000 for the job. But in the meantime, we're not saying do nothing, we're saying break it down, get measurables, and recruit. Thank you.
The, just one addition to it, and I forgot, was our tax collector, Laura Wilson, was present for the entire meeting. She did add some insight as to some of the good things that are happening with the consultant and some, appears to be some good training with the two positions that are filled within the department itself. And there's no question, Sarah Hunter, the consultant we're talking about, you know, is qualified and she gave us her qualifications and history, just so we would know where she came from, which does cite that. I think, it's just there's two sides or maybe three sides to every story. But with that in mind, Counselor McGivern.
You missed her chair, I think. Mr. Chair.
That's fine.
Thank you, Counselor McGivern. I think, I watched that meeting and what I got out of it is that the reason we have things to talk about is because Rory Casey is the treasurer and the consultant is doing their job. People are being trained, money has to be spent to move our city forward. There's a staffing shortage throughout many departments in our city still. It took us a very long time to find a DPW or director. I think the idea that we just get rid of our treasurer and hope for the best is not the right solution. I think we need to come into the present times, we need to pay people what we need to pay them to get things done so we can move forward so that we're not having the same conversation 50 years from now. There have been too many of the same conversations going on for too long in Holyoke. We're finally trying to do something about it, we're finally seeing where the problems are, and it's because we have people in positions who are pointing them out. And the argument that we have a treasurer who is unqualified may be valid in some ways, maybe he wasn't trained as a treasurer. However, he is doing his very best to make sure to point out the problems so that we can fix them. And we finally have people in departments in this city pointing out problems so we can fix them. We can't fix problems we don't have. Now that we know the problems we have, including with the sewage, for example, we can fix them, but we can't fix them if we don't acknowledge the problems exist and we don't acknowledge how to address the problems. We have the solutions, we like to sit around bickering about them instead of fixing them. So that's all I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Counselor Murphy Ramalletti.
Thank you. I watched the finance committee meeting, wasn't able to be there, had a work event, like I'm missing a work event right now. And I just feel like sometimes this body has like selective amnesia on like how we got to where we are. And like, I agree, it is super troublesome to have the situation that we have right now. But like, also, it's kind of troublesome how we got to this position. And there were members on this body who were here for decades and have that experience that we all keep hearing about, who just, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, the state has been telling us these are the things we need to do. And then all of a sudden, it's a shock when a consultant comes in and says, yeah, it's actually, it might take three years because if you think about it, guys, like, we've actually been getting into this position for, I don't know, two decades. So I'm not surprised that it's not taking a year and it's taking longer. And I'm also just not sure how it's, it blows, it does blow my mind that we're here. And I just, I really feel like, there's, there's things that night that were discussed that, as Counselor McGivern mentioned, our tax collector was here and explained how much better it's been since our treasurer was appointed. He's not our acting treasurer, he's our treasurer. And we appointed him. And it just, it just blows my mind that people are shocked that we're in the state that we're in and don't feel that we should be investing, we should, we got three, we got three resumes submitted for the position that was posted. Maybe if it paid better, maybe if it wasn't so political, maybe more people would be applying, maybe if it was a chief financial officer. There's probably a lot of reasons why people aren't applying for that job. I also want to remind people that the last few times, the treasurer position has also been, like, it's been appointed. People have left and it's had to be appointed. It's just, it's just wild to me what folks on this body will remember and then choose not to remember. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this because I joined the council to actually move things forward and look for solutions. And the solution is not putting the posting up again. There's an election in a few, like, a month, and this position unfortunately is still elected in our city. So I'm just going to leave it at that because here we are. Thank you so much.
Counselor Rivera.
Yeah, Counselor Murphy Ramalletti covers some of the topics. I think for me, that this is not a new problem, this is a problem that has been festering within the city for over maybe 15 years now. And I guess bringing your books in order that haven't been in order for like 15 years is not going to happen overnight. It's going to take time. And we need to be patient throughout the process if we're going to do it right. I think one of the major issues that we've had as a community here in Holyoke and, I guess in the governmental process, right, the process of democracy is that everything moves slow, right? Just in general, government moves slow. But when you bring politics and bureaucracy in it, it makes it even slower. And Holyoke can't afford that, to be honest. When we're pushing things back, we get things like the CSO problem, we get things where the sewer, the sewage is running a deficit on a regular basis, even though people are going to say that that's not true now, apparently. But like, this is not a one day to the next thing, this is something that has been festering and has been accumulating for years and years. And to say that one should be able to do more with less in a particular circumstance, that's to say the same thing as us being able to fix the CSO problem without federal government dollars, in a sense, right? So like, I guess for me, it's not necessarily, again, I'll reiterate, it's not fair to the taxpayers of the community that they have to pay double tax, bro. You're, like, there are people on the council that'll come and say that we're going to save money and we're going to do things a certain way, but when we do them that way, time and time again, we're at this point, right, where we have to do things and pay more or hire a consulting agency or do something where it makes no sense. Like, how are we going to put out a job that's not even open yet? Like, I don't even think Rory's resigned, he's actually running again. So like, how do you, how do we put out a position and try to hire for a position when someone is still actively working in the position? I don't even think that's legal. It doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. So, I don't know. I'm going to vote on yes on this one because at the end of the day, there, for decades, I guess I want to say, there's been a certain way of doing things. And to be honest, there's got to be a time for accountability, man. So I'll vote yes now, just to get this out of the way and start moving things forward because the more we procrastinate and push things down the road, I think that my daughters who are now three and one are going to have to be dealing with a lot of these issues. They might be dealing with the CSO issue when they're 25 and 30 years old. Thank you.
Mr. President, just a point of order, can we, can we take a vote on two and then can we then take three off the table? Because we've kind of morphed into three and it's not, it's still on the table.
I don't have a problem with that. I think we reckon, I didn't say anything because I think we recognize two kind of leads into the three.
But just on the motion on number two.
But item, the one thing is, I agree with you, Counselor Bartley, but I don't think item three is going too far tonight.
Well, I just want to vote on number two if we could. Can we do that?
Is there any further discussion on item number two?
Counselor Malnala Velez does his hand.
Hey, Counselor Anderson Bergos did too. But we, is there anything more on item two?
My comments will be directed at item...
Three.
Before I vote on item three, correct.
Okay, so just take the vote.
Yeah, Counselor Malnala Velez, on anything else on item two?
I'll hold off, that's fine.
Okay. All right, the motion on the floor is to adopt the committee report that item two's been complied with. I think that goes without saying, it was filed by Counselor McGee, our president. We did the, we did what the order asked us to. We have, also, remind everyone, there's two reports, part of it is what was already, was given to us verbally and as a PowerPoint at the committee meeting, but they're in your package this evening. I plan to review mine and just to keep up to date with all of it. There is useful information in what took place in that meeting and there is a lot to think about. So I think the fairness is that the order has been complied with. Because we're high-bred, it's a roll call vote, the president will call the roll.
All right, first is Counselor Anderson Bergos.
Yes.
Counselor Bartley.
Yes.
Counselor McGivern.
Yes.
Counselor Jordan.
Yes.
Counselor Malnala Velez.
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy Ramalletti.
Yes.
Counselor Poiola.
Yes.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera.
Counselor Rivera is left for her training.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yes.
Counselor Bacon.
Yes.
But your vote has been complied with.
Motion to take three off the table?
Second.
The, on that motion, it was complied with, as the president said, just to say, in the chambers, a motion made second to take item three off the table for discussion, all those in favor and opposed. At that meeting, Mayor Garcia did say he would introduce this at this particular special meeting. It's an order filed, a request, a request for, for transfer under my name on behalf of the mayor. And the request is for $250,000 from the city stabilization fund into the mayor's contracted services for the purpose of hiring consultants specifically in the treasurer's department with this particular money. The motion is off the table for discussion, all those in favor and opposed.
Suspend the rules to allow the chairman of finance to speak?
A motion made second to suspend the rules to let the chair of finance speak, all those in favor and opposed. Mayor Garcia is online. I don't think I have a lot to add to this, it's something that I believe, and I think part of what Counselor Jordan said makes sense, is we need to continue with services from consulting. But I don't know if we're quite there as the detailed, detailed of those services themselves and where we all, where we all stand. and where we all, where we all stand and with some, some light at the end of the tunnel. Just point out, we are down to 12 members. The stabilization transfer at all times is a two-thirds vote. That's by statute. That's nothing to do with anything else. Even this evening, it would be, any transfer would be a two-thirds vote if we tried to do it tonight because we'd be doing two readings in the first, on the first receiving. But with that in mind, is there any, Councilor Bartley?
I, you know, but I, I don't want to skip in front of Juan and...
Councilor Anderson Burgos, I know you waited for this. But can we have a motion first?
Motion to, I guess, pass the first reading.
Motion, second. I, I don't think it's motion to pass the first reading, Kev. I think it's just, just motion to approve the transfer.
All right, just, well, there's got to be two readings.
Has to be two readings.
So, motion to take up the first reading, I guess, so these gentlemen...
All right, for discussion purposes, the motion is to pass the first reading. Councilor Anderson Burgos, you had your hand up earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Avatar President. So, I, I understand it, I get it. No one wants to pay an enormous amount of money. No one does. So, what I'll go into is my own personal experience. So, recently, I went to the dentist, and, don't freak out. I went to the dentist and, and, just for a regular cleanup. And when I got there, they found something. And I wasn't prepared to take on over $2,000. I had to put that on a credit card. The dentist then told me if I didn't do this, I would have a really bad infection, and it could lead to a lot of problems. So, I was forced to use my credit cards so I can pay for, for the surgery. And what I'm, what I'm seeing here is an option that I had to do, I had to take. Either pay this money or risk my health. I went and/or meet someone in an alleyway and get special dental care, right? Now, my dentist is the one that discovered this. Let's, for the sake of an argument, let's say Rory is that dentist. Goes into a department that has been not running at its best over 20 years. Over 20 years, this department has seen high turnover. And what I know professionally about high turnover is that it costs any business more money to function. That means not just the treasurer's department, but departments throughout the city. And it is up to us to finally put an end to it. Now, we have a professional in that department who's found so many things that are wrong with that department and has brought forward a plan, right? That they're looking into to address this. That department has been getting hit with fees, a lot of fees for over 20 years. There's a cost that we could have saved. The people of the city elected me because they know that I would make the right step. The right step is to pay this forward, to have this paid for. Because if not, it's going to keep happening, and it's going to keep costing us money. This can't continue. This can't continue. We, we are going to be in the same situation down the road if we don't address this now. We can't keep doing this. That's it.
Councilor Madalena Velez.
I guess, first of all, I go, Councilor Rivera, my, I have, the, the, the position for...
Jose.
Whether you agree or disagree.
Jose, Councilor Madalena Velez, you're, you're, well, we can, but we can't. You were, it was like you were breaking up at first. Try again.
Can you hear me better now?
Now we can hear you better.
Okay, perfect. So, I just wanted to start off with, you know, echoing Councilor Rivera's comment that I find it a little disrespectful that we're talking about posting a position that's not open. Agree or disagree with the work that Rory is doing in the treasurer's office? He is treasurer currently that was appointed. And I should say, appointed correctly, because out of the three candidates that were, that signed up or applied, there were only two that were actually eligible. Because according to our city charter, you must be at least two years a resident, and there was only two of them, Amy or Rory. So, whoever voted for the third person, great individual, great gentleman, but he was not eligible. So, you know, we talked about the charter and following the laws. Just wanted to make that quick point. That said, echoing sort of Councilor Anderson Burgos's story about the dentist that gladly got to that point, this is a reality where we're at. We have, you know, I went to the dentist today too, by the way, Councilor Anderson Burgos, and we have a lot of rotten teeth that need to be fixed. And it's not going to be fixed without investing money. I keep hearing about the, the private sector. And when we don't, from my experience, when we don't invest into a company, what happens, the company down scales, the company gets rid of a lot of services, and the company does not, is not as big as it can be. Holyoke is on an upward trajectory. It's getting more businesses, you know, for those consuls that actually make it downtown outside of election season. You see the progress that is happening downtown. We need to invest in these things in our city. And that starts with having a treasurer's office that actually works. You know, I keep hearing from different depart, from different businesses that work with the city at times where they're actually getting their checks on time now. That's great, that's good stuff. Let's keep investing, let's keep working towards that, and let's keep helping Rory and the mayor make the treasurer's office the best that it can be so we can make our city the best that it can be. But clearly, some don't want that for our city, or I don't know what, I don't even know what the, the plan is anymore. I'm just, just wanted to say those things. Thank you.
Councilor Bartley.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Mr. President. I'll just, I'm just going to, I think I'm just going to add to what was said a little bit earlier. I don't want to be repetitive. The transfer is, and I heard, I heard the analogy, and I'm not going to disagree with it. But in this case, the transfer is coming from the city stabilization account. And just as an aside, Mr. President, I'm hopeful that we'll get an update on where, where that account stands, maybe for the first meeting in October. Maybe we could have you ask a treasurer for a, for communications. You know, maybe you could file an order for that, Joe. The stabilization fund is something that, when we withdraw from it, is something that affects everybody going forward. So, to take the analogy further, if I'm putting $2,000 on my credit card for my dental work, it's not affecting my mortgage when I do that. But if you're taking $250,000 from a stabilization account, it is affecting the other things. The tax rate, the bond rating. It has a consequence to that. Those words have not been said tonight. Let's just pull it from the 250. Also, other words, other words have not been said to stop this. And about respect and all this, all these feelings, well, good for you. There was no one here who said, "We want to stop this." People who said, "We want to modify it, and we don't want to throw another $300, $250,000 at the problem." So, I don't know, I don't know how this thing gets morphed. Furthermore, how it gets morphed at the treasurer's office and been disarrayed for 20 years? That is such nonsense. We've had political races. Sandy Smith was in there for an election. She decided to resign, and the office has turned a little sideways. That just happened a few years ago, Mr. President. It hasn't been 20 years. So, I, I just, I just find it amazing, frankly, that we have to go down these sideways roads. But the main point is, the stabilization fund, we've been told over the years, other than for snow removal on, on a deficit basis, we should not remove that because of the consequence it has. So, if we have to get consultant fees, then we budget for it back in, back in May. That was known to somebody that this was coming, but apparently it wasn't. But you want to talk about planning, and you want to talk about getting ahead of things? Well, there was no planning. Because what are we doing? We're taking from the stabilization account. It's the stabilization account that keeps the city's bond rating, which, by the way, got smacked down, keeps it at least some kind of a even keel. And to do this would be a massive mistake. Councilor Cressley, I won't support it. Thank you.
Councilor Givner.
Thank you, Councilor. I just wanted to point out that during the report to the Finance Committee, the consultant did let us know that the funds being found and retained by the treasurer's department would essentially, are paying for the consultant fees. So, they are actually doing enough work in the city to collect fees that we weren't getting before that would cover those, those consultant fees and more. They're finally figuring out ways to collect more monies, distribute monies, get monies out of accounts that are incurring fees. So, I just wanted to point out that they will cost us something, but they're also getting monies that we weren't getting before and paying for themselves.
Councilor Rivera.
Yeah, I, I think, so, yeah, that, it's crazy because I do remember a variety of things coming up in the news back, back then, right? I don't want to say any names or put anybody out there, but, like, there have been issues coming out of the treasurer's department for years with regards to us being hacked and losing money, right? Not paying grants on time and a variety of other things. It comes out of one particular department. Whether it's their full responsibility or not, it still falls on them because they're the ones that has to write the report at the end of the day. So, ultimately, to say that this is new, that, that would be bogus, bro. At the end of the day, it's bogus, it's straight bogus. I can get, I can get news articles that go back 15 years about this kind of stuff. Okay. It's ridiculous. But at the end of the day, so, when, 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 when we have accountability, right? This is what happens, right? We have people that get loud, they start blocking, they start making up different things that come up out of nowhere. That's what happens when you're being held accountable. I know that, that happened to me back then, right? When I was younger, when I caught my case. You were accountable, right? And when you're held accountable, and it's time for things to come forward, and you actually have to do things, there is a plan. The, the reason why they asking you for that much money, they presented a whole plan throughout the process to what reasons why their costs are that much. Do we like the cost? No, I don't want to spend that much money either. I don't think it makes sense. But there is no other plan. The other plan sounds like, no, that plan makes no sense. Let's come up with another plan. That doesn't make sense either, then. There has to be a, if, if we're, for presenting a plan, if we're going to knock one plan, you have to present another plan. That is not happening right now. That is not happening right now. And at the end of the day, it makes no sense that we continue to, to be on the same path that's been happening for the last couple decades, bro. Like, it makes no sense. It's the reason why I got, I feel like it's the reason why I got elected. Like, to be honest, people want to see something new. People want to see change, and people want to see the movie, I mean, the city move forward. And there are some that feel like in their, in their way, and I respect it because we all have our own ways of dealing with things and our own ways and our own perspectives. We see things the way we see it fit. But at the end of the day, it's not about just one particular individual, it's about the community overall. And when election season comes, you're going to see the votes. And when the votes come out, the votes will speak clearly like they did before, right? So, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, it doesn't matter whether I get the votes or not. I don't do it for, for, for clout or to be here for 15 to 20 years. I don't plan on being here for 20 years because I have other plans, bro. I have other plans. This is not my everyday cup of tea. "Oh, my God, I'm going to city council, I'm going to be so happy to be on TV for 15, 20 years." Like, no, that's not what it is. For me, at the end of the day, it's actually about the people. It's actually about the people, bro. So, whether you believe it or not, grassroots is helping the people move out and then let someone else come in and take over. So, that way, the process continues and the community evolves. And it, it's not evolving here at all. I'm not a preacher either, I'm just a human being.
Councilor Rivera. I said the same exact things 44 years ago.
Hey, I'm not mad at you, Councilor McGivern. But at least, we play the game on a level where it's helping the people, right? And that's where the, that's where the respect factor comes in.
Councilor Megan.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I will acknowledge that the statement was made at the meeting that the consultant is bringing in money to cover the consultant fees. And so, the question that I asked was, could she please provide a spreadsheet and show us how those numbers are working? Because it's easy to say things. I want to see the numbers, I want to see how they're working out, I want to see what is a one-time savings, I want to see what is a day-to-day operational savings. These are things that matter. That's accountability. Throwing money at something and ending up in the same place you started at is not accountability. That's wasting taxpayers' money. And right now, we have people that are frustrated because, fast forward $300,000, we're still months behind in closing our year-end. And that is a problem. And that's what we're trying to solve. And I think to speed up the process, which we all agree needs to happen, is to pull the treasurer, going unelected, out of committee, send it to the State House, and then start moving on filling the positions. That's it. Thank you.
Councilor Anderson Burgos.
Thank you. I just, I want to make sure, I want to point out one thing. First of all, when the consultant was in front of us and we tried to make an arrangement, let's just say, a payment arrangement, "Will you take this, or can you do that?" Her pride and her confidence was a straight no, which tells you, "I don't need your money." Then you, 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 you get stuck there, you stay there. She was willing to say bye and forget it. She will not reduce her professionalism for a favor to the city because her professionalism is just that. That's one point I want to make. And here's another point. In the six years I've been here, going on six years that I've been here, not to my knowledge, I have ever experienced or heard about a consultant going into that office and finding all this out. All of this out. And is it past 20? Absolutely, it's been 20 years. And let's not forget that the previous person that was there transferred $10,000. So, let's talk about accountability and professionalism and how to do your job right. Let's talk about that. And the final thing I will leave you with, don't leave anywhere, not yet.
Go on, over here.
So, let me ask this. Through the Avatar President, how many votes do we need? Right, nine.
Stabilization transfers are always nine.
Right, nine, no, I know the answer. So, what I'm saying with that, I can already count right now, at least four of our counselors are going to say, "No, let's shoot this down." So, why are we wasting time here? Why are we wasting time? Because I, I can fight and fight and fight and say, "This is good for the city, let's see this pass." I can, until I'm blue in the face. And the same people who repeatedly hold things up and are considered obstructionists, I'm not pointing out any fingers or anything like that. Will be the same ones that will shoot this down. So, what is our option right now to at least have this save the day, right? Is it to table? Let's do the best thing for the city, and let's stop saying, "Oh, this will get me votes because here I am. I am for you, I'm going to save your taxes, I'm going to..." Yeah, that's something I would like to do too. But, at the end of the day, we have a job to do. So, let's not waste each other's time and get it done. Whatever is going to happen, let's let it happen.
Councilor Tomlin, for the first time.
Yeah, I've been waiting a little while for this, but that's okay. I'll be pretty brief. And, and I think them coming in, I think they did an excellent job, the consultant. I think they're doing a great job. I've been around, I know some counselors saying that maybe I'm part of the problem because I've been here 20 years. I've seen the reports, a lot of my colleagues have seen the reports. We thought it was going to get turned around and squared away, it never did. Maybe that's part of our fault. We have a mayor that's coming in here and is trying to do something and bring in some consultants to look at the police department, the... consultants to look at the Police Department, the DPW sewer rate, the Tax Collector's Office, the Treasurer's Office. And I think that's part of the things that we have to do in government, is to look at a way to improve things. And I know that I had concerns myself, the $300,000, I said, what do we see for that? I mean, they came in, they, great slideshow, they showed what's been doing, what they've been doing in that office. And part of the problem is because they are short two people in office. Part of the problem is because we probably had three or four Treasurers or Acting Treasurers in the last maybe five years. It's like a rotating office, I mean, that's part of it. If you don't have the help in there and you've got people that are turning around and, I'm here for a year and a half, I'm leaving for another job, I'll hold up for, you know, six months until somebody can step in and the council can appoint somebody, so what do you do? I'm in the same point as Counselor Jordan, $300,000, $900,000, that's a lot of money. I mean, that's almost a million dollars for, but maybe that's what the cost is to take care of this. I'm reserved about the cost too, and Counselor McGivern made a great point, can we, can you maybe do it for less time, maybe six months or a year? I mean, we broke it down last year when we were concerned about what was done with the $300,000, we broke it down, well, we'll pay the $50,000 for the one month and we'll see how things go. We finally got them in here. We never got no reports, you know? Counselor Megan brought some good points that night, let's see what you've done, let's see you made changes, let's move forward with that, you know? I mean, that's important. You don't want to have someone's coming in there and throwing money at an issue and say, well, what did you do? Who'd you train? What's actually improved in the office? And as Counselor Givner said, they said they've brought in money that we never thought we had. And maybe that will pay for it, you know, down the road, but, you know, when you're taking stabilization money, which is sort of like sacred money and you're not supposed to be touching that, to put towards this, you know, I think that's something we got to sort of hold back on and say, and I'm in for improving the office, I'm in for getting a consultant, but at that cost, it's a little bit, little bit steep. You know, we have to find a way, can we get a treasurer like within, we're not going to get a treasurer within a couple weeks. We have an election. Rory's going to stay there, I think he's doing the best job he can. I don't know what happens if this doesn't go through, does she walk away tomorrow, the consultant? That's one of my concerns, what happens to the office? Is anybody going to come in? Is it going to take two more months or three more months to have some temp workers go in there and try to fix things? I mean, she started the job, I'd love to see her finish it, but at that kind of money, it's just, we're going to have to look at some other ways, I think, to do this. That's all I have to say. I'm all for improving this. When people talk about how's the mayor doing financially, I think this is probably one of the best mayors we've had in a while, looking at the city finances and how can we make things better? How can we improve the city finances? And I think the mayor's doing a great job with that, but, I mean, we're the ones that have to sort of pass things along, we get, we're the checks and balances. And now we're just saying, well, maybe we have to hold up a little bit. Is there another way we can do this? So I'm looking forward to trying to see what we can do to maybe keep some kind of consulting, bring in some temp workers or something, but I don't want all this yearly work that they put into it just fall apart and all of a sudden, you're on your own. That's something I really don't want to see. It's an important department, and I think, you know, the health of the city really rests in that department, so, thank you.
The purpose of this meeting was to address some time issues. Obviously with the sewer vote, without passing a sewer rate, the deficits in the Sewer Department are now going into the quarterly billing, it'll just be passed on to the taxpayers sometime in the future. The, this particular order, as the mayor pointed out, he requested that we take a vote on it this evening, hoping that he could keep the consultant going because the $50,000 is all but ran out. So that's why we're having a special meeting this evening. As stated, I think we all know, stabilization transfers, nine votes, we have 12 members present, I think there's, I'd be lucky to say if there were six votes tonight. But there are other options. The Finance Committee would be happy, and I can speak for myself, due to a follow-up discussion, there's some questions that are unanswered, and obviously some maybe other options that are out there. Mayor Garcia has his.
Could I make a couple points before? Because one of the things leads into a question I want to ask for Mayor Garcia, if he's open to it.
Well, okay, but we got to stick with the scope of what the motion is on the floor and what's before us.
Right.
Counselor Jordan.
Again, the plan, somebody alluded to, I think I spelled it out at the beginning, what the plan is, so let's not lose sight of what the other option is. The other option is get the quarterly reporting, do a quarterly approval of funds for this consultant. I could accept, I'm not thrilled about that, to be perfectly honest with you. I feel after a year, this thing should be further down the road than it is. Okay, quite frankly, I think $300,000 is a lot, that's six times what was paid for the last consultant that went into that office. And, but, having said that, we are where we are, okay? And I'm not the guy day-to-day in charge, but what I am suggesting is make, if the mayor is amenable to this, he may just say, oh, to hell with it, but this is his choice, he's the boss. We make a quarterly appropriation and begin to have the long-term solution plan put into effect. Quite frankly, Rory signed up for a temporary deal. He admitted that at his hearing, you go back, he didn't sign on to be the forever treasurer, okay? So the point is, we need the after Rory plan. No one is suggesting Rory resign and that's just where we're at. That's not at all what I said. What I said is, let me, I, we should go back and play the tape, but let's be clear. What I suggested was, while I did not think he was the candidate qualified to be in the position, initially, he certainly, like I said, he has a heart of gold and he's doing everything, you know, within his power. But I will say, the solution is that we need to post the position and recruit the candidate, whoever that candidate is. And when that person is selected, then Rory resigns and that person takes over. That's the, that's the answer. That's what this is, that's what everyone has suggested, and what I'm suggesting to you is, that should not take place two years from now, that could be happening right now. And we're going to need, I don't know, maybe six months to recruit the candidate? I don't know how long that's going to take, maybe three months. And, and the other interim plan that we need to do is we need, we have funded five positions in that office. They need to go and fill those other two. That will also be part of the solution of this problem. Use the monies that we've appropriated to go get the temporary services and see how that helps. Because if you bring in account temps or other experts in these areas, I'm suggesting to you that that's going to go a long way towards the solution. For example, colleagues, you've got Chickaby's office and Westfield office, all these other communities, they're not operating with $300,000 worth of consultants here in to have one person four, five days a week. So we also need to be studying and get our treasurer exposed to talking to these other communities, the consultant mentioned Dedham and other towns. So having said that, the alternative to this is a short-term plan with the beginning of the filling of the position and filling of these temps. That is the alternative. Thank you.
With no objection, Mayor Garcia.
No objection.
Second.
Good evening, counselors. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Hey, so, I don't, I don't, I don't mean to put anything in front of this body to ever divide the council on any issues whatsoever, but do appreciate the insight and the passion that I hear from everybody in trying to figure out how to solve these issues that are in front of us. Now, understand that I'm in a position currently where I'm trying to navigate liability, find the efficiencies, close the gaps, so that we're protecting our assets, we're protecting our resources, and that we're, we're essentially trying to conclude a much more functional government so that we can keep up with the important services that this community cares about. Now, I did say over and over, in previous reports and conversations with counselors, that what we got to do is going, it's going to be expensive, it's going to be extensive as well. And also, we got to be bold, because not only do we have to do the investment here that we're talking about right now, there are some structural changes we got to work on in our form of government so that we can close those material deficiencies identified in the, in the outside audit for the past 10, 15 years, which I've shared with the public as well as this body in previous reports, as, and also, you know, a lot of the things that were reported to us from the DLS. You know, we're trying to, you know, the blueprint is there, and what I have in front of you currently is actually a couple of strategies to help achieve our overarching goal. Strategy one includes this investment in the Treasurer's Office. While that's happening simultaneously, strategy two, currently in front of the council, change the position from elected to appointed, so that we can make the position competitive and find that qualified candidate that can take on that role and manage 160-plus million-dollar operation we have going on here in the city of Hoyo. Strategy number three includes the CAFO, the CAFO role. We're talking about turnover, retention. There are, I did say in the Finance Committee, and I say it here tonight, I think that the concerns that I hear from the counselors who are very skeptical about this, I can't argue against that because counselors have been around for a very long time that have seen it all throughout the years. But I think the plans that I'm introducing, these multiple strategies, help not only with what we got to do right now, but also how we're going to sustain it moving forward and then continue to cultivate and build on the changes that we've implemented. And so the CAFO position helps strengthen internal controls and oversee and guide those operations. And then lastly, is our, by the way, the CAFO role currently in front of the council. Lastly, is our municipal financial management's manual. That, you know, I've heard, what's the CAFO going to do? What if the treasurer comes in and doesn't do what it's expected? Well, that's identified in that manual, that's going to be sure that we hold these folks accountable to what's expected, what's expected from them in managing what they're hired to do. The other point too is, the point on stabilization, you're absolutely correct, except that I did forward a plan, and you can review in the report that I submitted to the council when I submitted my budget for approval, that dollar amount, the $300,000, was taken out of certified free cash. There were some concerns raised by the council, which I totally understood and accepted and appreciated the concern because these conversations do need to happen. We need a reality check, and I was hoping that everybody got that reality check to understand the magnitude of the problem that we're dealing with, this $160 million business, so that we can be on the same page and not like it, because I don't like it. I would never want to just throw away $250,000, $300,000, that's for sure, but understand why we got to do it. And so, instead of approving that free cash transfer to support the service, it was decided among the body, why don't we just move it in? Well, it was recommended to me and I said, okay, no problem, resubmitted the order, got moved to the stabilization, and that's where that funding source was held. So it was, it's not that we're tapping into our stabilization, it was identified out of certified free cash and we put it as a placeholder into that, but also, you approved and thank you, I very much appreciate it, the $50,000 so that we can keep going and not lose the momentum. So just, just wanted to clarify that real quick. But, you know, I'm not, I don't want to put something in front of you that's going to divide you guys, and I listen, and sometimes I sit here and I cringe because I feel terrible that people are getting divided on this issue. At the same time, very much appreciative that the conversation is happening openly in public. The public needs to see and understand this. The public's not going to like it because it's expensive, extensive, we have all these issues going on in the community, but I think from the short period that we've been here doing these things, there's been a lot of return in investment and positive feedback that people have been experiencing and feeling, and not just the public, but also the departments. And I think you heard clearly from our tax collector that was present that night, how much she appreciate the level of progress they've been made because of the help of this consultant firm. It's not just one individual, it's a team of people coming in, trying to get us out of, get us, you know, out of this hole a little bit here. But with that being said, you know, even if it doesn't pass tonight, yeah, I'm sure it's probably going to set us back a little bit here, will probably lose some of that You know, I think as the manager, I got to try to continue to figure it out because I can only operate to the extent of what the City Council gives me and makes available to me. But there is a clear plan, clear blueprint, clear strategy to achieve the incremental progress we need to put Hoyo in a much more stronger position. And we didn't get a smackdown on the bond rating, by the way. The bond rating thankfully was maintained because of this system that we put together to better manage the resources. Doesn't say that we have a better financial situation, but it measures our ability to forward plan, to forecast, to plan for uncertainty, to navigate liability, those are the things that got measured there. But because of these strategies we've implemented in the short term, thankfully, we were able to maintain the bond rating. And it's expected, if we continue this strategy, we can potentially see an increase, just to clarify that as well. Happy to answer any questions. Again, I'm with you guys, both pro and against, like, I think we have a shared concern of how we figure this out. I am not shooting from the hip, that's not my strategy, it's not my management style. I'm putting forward a plan that helps resolve this in the now, but also structurally change so that we can sustain it and build on it moving forward.
On the motion.
Seeing no further discussion. Motion on the floor is to pass the first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading.
Second.
All right. Counselor Anderson Burgos.
Yes.
Counselor Bartley.
No.
Counselor Givner.
Yes.
Counselor Gordon.
No.
Counselor Marla Valletti.
Yes.
Counselor McGee, yes. Counselor McGivern.
No.
Counselor Murphy Ron Beletti.
Yes.
Counselor Puelo.
No.
Counselor Israel Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor Jenny Rivera. Counselor Tomlin.
No.
Counselor Vagan.
No.
Six.
Boy, you guessed that one right, uh, years.
Motion to adjourn.
There are motions to reconsider action and put this in committee.
A second hit.
What was the vote?
Not on that one, Mr. President. I wouldn't be in favor of reconsideration on this item, I think the mayor should come in with a new item.
I, I, I think, hearing that, I think that a lot of people are thinking that.
Okay.
We could have a follow-up discussion and get some answers on this particular item, even though we would then ask for a possible replacement.
Trusting you as chair.
For the record, the vote was six-six, one absent.
Thank you. Motion made second that we reconsider action for the purpose of referring to the Committee on Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Motion to refer to Committee on Finance, is there any discussions?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Motion made second to adjourn. Good night. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned, the Avatar is done.
Have a good night, everyone.